Hey everyone, this is the Crosswinds Church More Than Sunday Podcast. I am not Chris Coley. My name's Hunter Van Damme and I'm the music director here at Crosswinds Church. Chris and Andrew are out of town for a few days, but instead of not publishing a podcast while they're gone, we thought it would be a good opportunity to share with you in the Town Hall Zoom meeting that we had a few days ago. We had Chris, Aaron Horner, and Michael Mosby host a panel of people from the Crosswinds community to share their thoughts and stories and give us a chance to listen to their conversations. Along with this podcast, we have the full video of this Town Hall on our website, as well as our YouTube page, if you want to watch it there. Thanks for listening and we hope that this Town Hall is as impactful for you as it was for us.
All right, everyone, thank you so much for joining us tonight. I'm Chris, I'm the senior pastor here at Crosswinds and we're honored that you would join and want to be a part of this Town Hall. If you've been a part of Crosswinds for any amount of time, you've probably heard me say something that I say a lot around here. We agree to disagree on lots of things at this church. And often when I say that from up front, what I mean is we agree to disagree theologically. There are lots of theological things we disagree on, or even interpretation of scripture. Often when I'm talking about that, I mean it politically, like, we don't believe that Christians have to be a part of any one political party opposed to another one. But something interesting happened a few weeks ago in the wake of the killing of George Floyd and the subsequent outrage. I was talking with a friend and my friend asked me what it would look like for Crosswinds to respond to this. And he said to me, "Crosswinds cannot be neutral on this." My friend had thought that when it came to an issue like police brutality as a church, we would just agree to disagree on that, like we do a lot of other things we disagree on, or that Black Lives Matter, that we would just agree to disagree. And at first, I was really offended. Like, why would he think that Jesus is really clear about his feelings on racial injustice? It's not like when you read scripture, there's a lot of room for debate on whether it's okay to kill an unarmed person. Just hanging there for a second. A few weeks ago, a Minneapolis police officer placed his knee on the neck of George Floyd for almost nine minutes. In that position, George Floyd began to just explain, "I can't breathe, I can't breathe," repeated it over and over and over. Bystanders are starting to record this and shout out to the police. He's not even resisting arrest right now. Get off of him! After about five minutes, George Floyd stopped moving and appeared unconscious. People in the crowd started pleading for the officers to check his pulse. The officer on his neck did not lift his knee off until medical personnel arrived and they carried him to an ambulance. Floyd died at the hospital. Lest you think that this is just the police and, you know, my read on it, the mayor of Minneapolis, the next morning, spoke real bluntly and said, "This officer failed." In the most basic human sense, George Floyd should not have died. I say all of that to say, that is what we are leading into this Town Hall with, is events that have started to occur in our world the last few weeks, coming out of that specific event. Although there's been many, many others like it. And by the way, I shouldn't have to say this, but of course, we know not all police are like this. We know not all police would do this. We know there are great police in the world, in our cities. We all have friends and family that are police. We have police in this church. This is not all police. We're so grateful for so many of our police. But I was offended, out of all of that, that my friend would think that our church would be neutral or that I would be neutral on this whole thing. I mean, when you look at Jesus, he leads by example in not just showing love to everyone, regardless of race, but actually teaching on the subject and building relationships himself with people that were of a different race than him, right? More significantly, Jesus was a brown-skinned Jewish guy, not white. So why would my friend think that church would be neutral on this? All right, since that time, it hit me. My friend was afraid that we would be neutral because the church has not been as vocal as it needs to be about racism. And when it has been vocal, maybe what it has not done, and this is important, the church has not made itself an ally with people of color, nearly as much as it could and it should. Allyship, as I've learned from my friend, Michael here, as we've been talking the last few weeks, allyship is more than just believing that racism is wrong. It's taking on someone's struggle alongside them. And here's the thing, we see Jesus do this again and again and again with people who are marginalized or rejected by their society. By the way, when I say society, can you read the word "system" into that back then? And when we look to the Bible to see how Jesus did that, you know what it began with? Seems to me like it almost always began with listening. Just listening. Whether it was somebody marginalized, like the Samaritan woman at the well, he listened. Or somebody marginalized because of their job, Zacchaeus, Jesus goes to his house for dinner, which is what? It's listening. Or a Roman centurion, whose servant Jesus kills, he begins even that, with listening. And if we're going to be a church of allies to people of color, it begins with us acknowledging the pain of those people that we see as our family, our church family, and then listening. I'm not sure why that's been so hard for the church over the years. Maybe because the constructs of church, the existing constructs, are like Sunday morning services. And they're not real interactive, right? I mean, it's listening, all right. It's just listening to one person, often me. But a few years ago, I had a chance to visit a friend of mine's church, who's a pastor in Hayward. And this church, an African-American church, they were doing a Town Hall to give their church a chance to voice their fears and their frustrations and maybe their hopes over what was happening with the political situation at the time. And before I went, I asked my pastor friend, when he told me that they were going to do this, I said, "Well, what do you do at the Town Hall when people disagree with each other?" And he said, "We just disagree and we do it respectfully and we do it with love." And I was so curious to see how this would work. What, do you just open it up and you let everybody talk? And it was wonderful. I watched lots of people turn out to give voice to something and lots to just listen and seek to understand. And it left me inspired to do something like that at Crosswinds in different moments of crisis. When we see gun violence, what would it be to talk about it in a Town Hall? When we have disagreement on environmental issues, like climate change, what would it be to talk about it? I thought that could be a way for our church to actually demonstrate unity in the midst of disagreement and like create space for conversation together. I brought that idea up to our team and it was shot down so quick, you guys. If you are ever under the impression that what I say goes around here, nope, our team overrules me all the time. I got lots of bad ideas. Anyway, I'm hoping a few years later that we can revisit that idea and we can start to hold some Town Halls as a church that leave room for conversation. And maybe tonight is the first in what might be something we could be doing a lot more around here. But here's where tonight is very different than that original idea. Very different. Some Town Halls are not about debate. And some of them are not about disagreement because some things are just so core to who we are as people of Jesus, that there's really not room for debate over them. And I say it to say, at the core of our faith is this idea that all people are created in the image of God. That there's not anyone you will ever lock eyes with who does not matter to God. And at the core of our faith is this other idea that we read in Galatians 3, "We are all one in Jesus Christ." If you call yourself a follower of Jesus, you either already believe what I just said or you need to believe it. You need to start believing it. This is a Town Hall where things are not up for debate, those things. Tonight's Town Hall, it just needs to be a place to listen because to become better allies, listening is what we need to do. And so, we have assembled some people of color from Crosswinds to just speak to us from their heart, very vulnerably, for them courageously to come on and share with us about their own experiences and their own hopes and their own fears, so that we can listen. I'm here co-hosting this tonight with my friend, Michael Mosby, who has been a part of Crosswinds longer than me. We recorded a few podcasts earlier in the past few weeks. I know many of you have listened to those. And I'll just say, Michael has been a voice that I have appreciated listening to and learning from these past few weeks. When I asked him to co-host this with me and help bring leadership, he was willing to say yes. I'm so grateful for his leadership in this. Also alongside both of us is one of our pastors, Aaron Horner, who has a real heart for this conversation. Aaron has been an important part of our pastoral staff having this conversation that we've been having over the last few years. And he has been monumental in setting up this Town Hall. And actually, Aaron was with me that night in Hayward. And he's had a vision for this kind of thing too, from the get-go. So, Michael, thank you for doing this and helping lead Crosswinds this way right now. Anything you would just want to say as we get started, as we moderate this thing together?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Thanks so much for that introduction. I really appreciate what you had to say. And I really appreciate everyone who's on YouTube watching this. You know, we can't see you from where we are, but we can definitely feel you. So I wanted to throw a big thank you for that. And I do want to provide some additional concept because I think it'll help us going forward. As to the past six weeks in our nation, you know, on May 5th, the Ahmaud Arbery video went viral. And it showed the shooting of Ahmaud Arbery that happened in February. And as of May 5th, there were no arrests made. Video comes out, goes viral, the McMichaels were arrested two days later. As a black man, we see that and say, huh, if it were not for the video... If it were not for the video... Twenty days later, on Memorial Day, we see Amy Cooper, who's in Central Park, and she's recorded having a verbal back and forth with a black man who's there, birdwatching, who asked her to put her dog on a leash. And she's on a recording saying to him, "I'm going to call the police and I'm going to tell them that there's an African-American man in Central Park who is threatening my life." And again, video went viral. Those of us in the black community just looked at it and said, "My goodness, here we go again. Here we go again." Of someone overtly that we saw using the system. And if any of you saw the movie, When They See Us, which was about the Central Park Five, should give you some context on what the police may have heard when they got that phone call from her. That's what was happening on Memorial Day. The next day is when we see the video of George Floyd. And I remember it. It was 4:20 in the afternoon when I saw that video. And I gotta tell you, when I saw that video, something inside me just broke. Something inside me broke. And we'll talk about that a bit tonight. So I'm happy folks are listening to that. And the last three weeks have been a whirlwind. Not just for me, but I think for our country as well. And I know my world will never be the same. Will never be the same. And I hope our world will never be the same. So once again, I just want to thank everyone who's tuning in right now. I want to thank everyone who's on our panel for being willing and courageous enough to share your stories. So thanks again, and I'm going to turn it over to my brother, Aaron.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, I just wanted to take a quick second and introduce folks that we have on our panel here, some of our Crosswinds family. We have Yanira Guzman, who is a business coach. She's an entrepreneur. She is a daughter of Latinx immigrants. We are super excited to have you, Yanira. Thank you for joining us earlier this year when we did our service on racial reconciliation. And thank you for coming in today. We also have Robert Sakagawa, who has been going to church definitely longer than I have here at Crosswinds. He is a gentleman of Japanese descent and has a lot of experience dealing with this subject specifically. And he's also a musician. And his son is a musician that we've seen here at Crosswinds quite a bit. We also have Cephas Smith. And Cephas Smith is born and raised here in Livermore, California. He is from here, not only from the city, but also from our community. He is a member of our worship team. Even on Easter, helped to lead us out this year, Easter, in some of our service. And you'll see him regularly in our services. And last but not least, we have John Winters. John Winters is a member of our epic high school ministry. He is a leader there. He's actually a mentor to my son, which is an honor. He's also an EMT and is finishing up his paramedic school right now. His job is working at a homeless shelter to provide medical screenings for the homeless individuals to make sure that they are safe and getting connected to the right level of service. So we wanted to start off, we'd ask everyone to think through a couple of questions, just little prompts to get us started. And we wanted to begin with our sister, Yanira. If you wouldn't mind just sharing with us a few words.
Sure. A specific question or just my...
Yeah, just in regards to what did the George Floyd murder mean to you?
So, first of all, I didn't even finish watching the video. There was no way I was going to sit through that. And the second thing, immediately, my heart went to my girlfriend, who is a black woman, and she's raising two boys. And why that's so important to me is because we raised our children together and so they're the same age. And as our children are going through puberty, her children are becoming men. Her black boys are becoming black men. And we've had conversations that her son has already been followed home from a police cruiser with a... You know, her son came home crying because he was walking their family dog and a woman crossed the street, a white woman crossed the street to, you know, avoid. So that just hit home for me because I'm hearing these stories through my friend here who's living them. And it went, you know, from raising our toddlers to now young men and now a senior going off to college. I just see that story. So it affected me greatly in that sense. And then also too, just hearing from, you know, my other friend, he's a black gay man, so hits on top of him being a black man, he's a gay man, so there's some other intersectionality there. And it was just the ability to relate on a human level. But this isn't them versus me, it's just, this is my community. They're my family. We're in each other's homes all the time. So that was... It was just hard. I just called them. Yeah, that was the first instant, yeah.
And what is it? Can you think of some ways that we as Crosswinds in this time can help to partner with our members of color to be able to move forward?
It's believe. Just believe them. Believe when we say this happens to us. And, you know, I have a different form of discrimination. I'm not, you know, but I believe when my best friend tells me this. I believe when my, you know, gay black man is telling me this. I just believe them on the first time. Why do we have to question it? So, I mean, that makes a huge difference. Believe them.
Definitely. One word that you mentioned, I was just wondering if we could kind of unpack it a little bit. You mentioned intersectionality. Do you want to just kind of describe it to us, what that word means?
Yeah, so there's just so, I mean, we all know, well, there's so much more to who we are. There's so many facets to who we are. We're not just our skin color, we're not just our ethnicity. But when we're only viewed in that way, it minimalizes our humanity. That's the word. So, yes, I am a daughter of Mexican immigrants. Yes, I came from, you know, a poor working background as a family. But I'm also a college-educated woman. I'm also with two degrees. I also went to corporate America. I also am a community, I'm also very spiritual. So there's so much more than, you know, if you were to see, a stereotype for Mexican women is that, you know, she's going to be pregnant early, she's going to have kids, and she's not going to do much. That's a stereotype that I had to fight. So, you know, for black men, when people see black men, there's a fear associated. And then I had this conversation because I also coached people in career and corporate. And then my friend, who's a black woman in corporate America, and she's doing very well, there's always that angry black woman image. And she's, we're just trying to hold people accountable. But the minute, you know, so we have to modify our language, what language we can use, what's more appropriate, when really, we're just trying... It's different. It's different.
Thank you. Thanks for unpacking that a little bit.
And if you don't mind me, Yanira, thank you for that. And I'm glad you talked a little bit about intersectionality. And I just wanted to mention, you know, for intersectionality, the unfortunate part about it is that it can multiply oppression. So you can get oppressed as a black person. You can also get oppressed as a woman. You can also get oppressed as a black woman lesbian. And so, there is the possibility of multiplication of aggression, oppression if you don't understand the intersectionality of folks. The good thing about it is, there's also the opportunity for multiplication of hope and multiplication of good things, leveraging the intersectionality in a way that's positive. So Yanira, again, thank you for bringing up that word. Really appreciate it.
Hey, let me do this.
Go ahead, Chris, I'm sorry.
Aaron, let me jump in real quick. Good stuff so far. We're also getting a number of questions that are kind of coming in. And I failed to in on the front end of this. If you've got questions that you want to submit, and maybe we can get to as many of those tonight as we can, here's how to submit them to us. Text TOWNHALL, one word, T-O-W-N-H-A-L-L, to this phone number, 925-255-9919. That's also Aaron's personal cell phone number, by the way. No, it's not. But if you text TOWNHALL, one word, to that number, I think something links you to a thing where you can submit your question. And we'll do our best to have people answer them. And by the way, if you've got a specific person that that question is for, say it on there so we know who to submit that thing to. So, go ahead, Aaron, keep going. You're doing great.
Yeah, Michael was going to share from his own personal experience a little bit.
Great, thank you for tossing it over. So when I was kind of thinking of my response to this, I couched it in what's my life been like since May 26th of this year. And on that day, I felt a lot of weight. I say I felt it like the weight of 50-plus years of being a black man in this country. Also felt the weight of my parents and my grandparents. And there were probably about 10 days in a row where I woke up in tears every day. Every day. And spent a lot of time in tears during a lot of those days and conversations with folks, including some with Chris, as we were going through this and preparing for the podcast. You know, the first thing it reminded me of, what it brought up for me, was Rodney King. That was in my lifetime in the early 90s. 91, the incident happened in 92 is when the officers were acquitted and the subsequent riots in LA at that time, all over the country. So it took me right back to there and I had the realization that I've seen this movie before. And unfortunately, I've seen this movie before and I've heard about this movie before from parents, from stories my parents told me and stories my grandparents told me. It goes back to stories of Emmett Till down in the South and other things. And I'm like, "I've seen this movie before and it's a movie I don't want to see." And ironically enough, it brought up actually a memory of a movie. So one of my favorite Spike Lee movies is Do the Right Thing. And as a side note, I would encourage everybody, just go take a look at that Spike Lee joint. And...
It's a little different this time too, I think.
Yeah. And, you know, and in the movie, toward the end of the movie, a character named Radio Raheem is killed by a police chokehold. And after Radio Raheem is killed, Mookie, who's Spike Lee's character in the movie, throws a trash can through the window of the pizzeria where he works. And the pizzeria is owned by Danny Aiello and Danny Aiello's character. And what it led me to think about was the name of the movie. There's a character in the movie named the mayor. And it is played by Ozzy Davis, great black actor. And he tells everyone, "Do the right thing. Do the right thing." And so you're left at the end of that movie, talking, thinking about what's the right thing to do. And it came up to me even in this period, what's the right thing to do? And it's been a hard question to even wrap my brain around, my arms around, my heart around, and try to answer. So there's been the weight of that as well. Yanira mentioned this, I had to face this with my kids. I sent my kids a text and I have three multiracial young men. And my text to them said, "Hey, part of me is really glad that you don't look black because maybe you'll be spared from some of this based on someone looking at you." And then I said, "But you know, the bigger part of me, the larger part of me wants you to claim your blackness. Own it. Find your black voice. Use it. And by the way, you're all, young men over the age of 18, vote." And I got texts back from each one of them and it surprised me. Each one of them, in their own way, said, "You know, as multiracial kids, we've had an identity crisis because we weren't sure what to claim, what to do." And they also all said, "But Dad, thanks to your text, you've given us permission to be black." Sorry, I'm getting a little emotional at this moment. I never knew they needed that. I grew up black. It never occurred to me that my multiracial kids might need to hear me say, "Own your blackness." And I'm happy to say that at this point, they're all now very engaged in the movement that's happening as a lot of Gen Y and Gen Z'ers are right now. Thank you very much for that. Keep it up. Love it. And then my last comment is, I had to own the weight of my actions and more so, the lack of my actions. I'm part of a generation that's called the silent generation. You know, my parents' generation, they marched with Martin. They protested with Malcolm. They protected their neighborhoods with the Black Panthers. Our Generation Y and Z folks are millennials and our Generation Z folks are on fire right now. Most of the marches and rallies I'm seeing are being organized by millennials and Gen Z'ers. Their fire is outstanding and humbling. And I'm so blown away by it and so appreciative of it. And it leads me, as part of the silent generation, to say, "What do I do?" Right? Back to the Spike Lee film. How do I do the right thing? How do I figure that out? There's one thing I know right now, is that this is not a moment, this is a movement. This is not a moment. This is a movement. And I just hope, like, today, we can start by listening, sharing these stories, acknowledging them. Chris brought up a great point in our podcast, gratitude. This is such a great space for gratitude right now and showing empathy. So again, I just want to thank everyone, all the panelists and the folks that have shown up on YouTube to be a part of this beginning effort for this. So, thanks a lot. Thanks for listening.
One question to unpack a little bit. When you talk about, and it's so powerful when you say that this is not a moment. And I think, like you're saying, it's not just a movie to be watched, but a movement. What would you say from yourself and from those that you're in connection with? What is the goal of the movement?
So, I think from, well, I think what I would say is fairly aligned with what I'm hearing as well. And that is to drive real change that leads us to a place of belonging of everyone. And it has to start with each one of us. But I think at the end of the day, is driving belonging for everyone, no matter who you are.
Wow, thank you for sharing that. We're going to our next panelist, we have Robert. Robert, would you mind... Robert, would you mind just giving us a little bit of your thoughts on what's been happening and how it's been impacting you?
Thank you very much. So first of all, I think as a, as a person, just as a human being. You know, the two recent. Incidents that, you know, we've been talking about here. Ahmad Aubrey, you know, shooting while he was essentially jogging, you know. And to, you know, the things being brought up about him being, you know, on a constructive side. When we see video of other people doing the same thing and, you know, not. You know, being pursued and, you know, sought to be harmed. And then the George Floyd incident. You know, as a person, just, you know, is. The only thing I can say is that that was absolutely soul crushing to see. One human do that to another human. And the other thing that struck me was even as the officer was being filmed. Kind of the vacant look on his face. Was particularly frightening. So. Just absolutely, you know, soul crushing. I don't know of any other way to put that. But, you know, you know, I want to kind of bring the discussion back to a couple of things that have been said here. And so, you know, as we talk about the intersection. Of, you know, where ethnicities in this country may be converging as a result of recent. You know, incidents, deaths of black Americans. And, you know, I do, I want to preface this by saying, you know, I, what I have to say here is. Based on my own personal observations, some of my feelings and experiences, I don't purport to certainly. Speak for, you know, the Asian community at large. But in terms of the, you know, we talked about the intersection of events and ethnicities. I can tell you that there's kind of a general feeling and also my observation that the Asian American community. Is not in that intersection. In fact, I'm not even sure that we're on the same roadway. You know. You know, with the whole shelter in place and quarantine situation, I have the opportunity to watch a lot of the morning shows. And I was watching this past week, interview with Spike Lee. And, you know, certainly I have a lot of respect for him and the arts, what he's accomplished and. And the voice he's giving, you know, that needs to be heard. But it was interesting, you know, he said in these times. You know, the, the need for, you know. Black Americans, Hispanic Americans, the way he put it was black and brown to come together. And it just struck me that, you know, we're. I don't think, again, I don't think he meant to, to. Ignore, you know, Asians. But, you know, it just, it's pretty obvious to me that in the discussion and news. That Asians are not typically included in this, you know, these discussions. And I wonder why that is and, you know. I think there's two things that come to mind. Number one, so, you know, I listened to last week's podcast. You know, Michael, where, you know, you, you indicated at the end of one thing to do is to, you know, maybe. It's not so much a matter of going back and reading and learning about history or reading a book, but rather that. The thing to do is to ally with, with somebody that you can relate to, you know, to come up somebody that. In my case, it would be, you know, somebody of Japanese descent or Chinese descent or Filipino or Indian. I descend, you know, try to understand what their experiences are here in America. The, you know, the one thing that came to mind is that if you were to do that with. Some Asians, a lot of Asians, I would think. I don't think you would get a lot. You know, there's something about the Asian. I don't know mentality, personality, but we don't talk a lot. We don't, for whatever reason, you know, bring a lot of these things to the surface. When, when there's a history in our country of oppression. I mean, you know, just horrible things that have happened to. People of Asian background, going back a long ways. But, you know, we don't talk about it in our history classes and certainly. You don't hear the Asian community at large, you know, this past May was Asian American Heritage Month. Year after year, it is kind of a blip on the news. Maybe you hear about the Cherry Blossom Festival in San Francisco and that's about it. So there's not a lot of information about Asian American history in America. And what's happened that comes out and I think, you know. We as an Asian community probably have to take some responsibility for that. But, you know, that's the paradox. You know, we may not, it may not be in our psyche to come out and address those things. And, you know, bring that to light, to say things about what's happened. In the Asian American experience that's not taught in the history classes, you know, for example. You know, I had posted a couple of years back about Executive Order nine zero six six. The imprisonment of Japanese American citizens during World War Two. And, you know, I, some very good friends of mine. Came up and said, you know, I didn't realize that that happened. These are people my age. And they just never been taught that in history class, you know, that's. To me was very daunting. The other thing is, is, you know, as I think about what is? The perception of Asian Americans of why, you know, why are we not necessarily in that intersection? Or why, why, why don't we, you know, seek to drive into that intersection? You know, talking about perception. So a couple of things. In, in recent years. So, you know, in terms of perception, there was that movie that came out, Crazy Rich Asians. And, you know, what, on one hand, for myself speaking, I'm sure probably for a lot of other Asian Americans. You look at it and say, well, okay, here's a movie with a large Asian cast, you know, finally. Asians portraying Asians. But what does that portrayal of? You know, affluent, industrial, somewhat aloof. You know, individuals, you know, I guess in the fifties, kind of derogatory term would have been inscrutable. So a real double edged sword there is because that is not. The, the experience of most Asian Americans of any, you know, ethnicity, Japanese, American, Chinese. Indian, Filipino, Pacific Islander. You know, we've had a hard time in this country. My parents especially having, you know, been in the internment camps and a lot of my relatives coming out and having to start from nothing. You know, with having to leave property behind and coming out to find that it's, you know, been so confiscated or otherwise. So, you know, that's one thing, that's the perception. The other thing is, you know, maybe it's timing, but at the time that the Broadway play Hamilton came out. Concurrently, George Takei, who, you know, let's be clear here, is not only just an Asian American actor. But also a gay Asian American actor who's been a very vocal advocate of. You know, that the ethnicity issue as well as, you know, gay rights. He had produced a Broadway play called Legionites. And it was specifically to portray, you know, the, the experience, the Japanese American experience. During World War Two and the internment camps. And, you know, this is a real complex issue. Because, you know, at the same time, while a lot were imprisoned, a lot served in the military. And to be clear, a lot of people of ethnic backgrounds served in World War Two. In the segregated manner, which, you know, is pretty amazing when you think about it. But still, you know, like I said, it came up concurrently at the time that Hamilton came out. And, you know, it, it, it had a short run on Broadway, but of course, when you're competing against something that. Was as prolific as Hamilton, you know, it didn't, I don't think it got the message across. I know that they went ahead and produced it as a movie, it was shown in different cities. But again, not a lot of coverage, not a lot of press on that. You know, it meant a lot to us as people who, you know, I'm one generation away. It was my parents and aunts and uncles that were in those internment camps. So, you know, so again, here, you know, it seems that, you know, and again, not through any. Necessary societal ill, but the timing. But the whole issue of what happened back then was again, kind of minimalized. And, you know, I don't want to say they were swept under the carpet, but it just didn't get the attention, didn't get the. The, I think the effect of, of bringing this, these issues to light. So those are, yeah, those are kind of my initial thoughts.
Time there too. Maybe it's a coming of age at this point where we can actually move to start addressing these issues in a, in a much better way, huh?
Well, yeah, you know, I agree. I mean, and I like the fact that you use the word we, you know, collectively. But, you know, at the same time, the onus has to fall on people of Asian descent. To do that, to be more forward, more vocal. And, you know, again, just my own personal observation, my own personal experience is that. For some reason, that's not necessarily embedded in our psyche to do that. And that's, that's potentially a real problem. Because again, you know, you can go back and look at, educate yourself fairly quickly, just doing some quick internet searches. About, you know, some of the things that have happened to various Asian ethnicities. But, you know, concurrently, you know, where do we stand? I don't, I don't know in this national conversation. So it's, it's, it's a question, yeah.
Yeah, you think maybe just for the sake of time, maybe we could hear from you, like maybe one way that we can, we can work together to move forward?
You know, it's going to take, yeah. For instance, there is actually a Japanese American organization, the JACO, Japanese American Citizens League. That has been, you know, trying to be more of an advocate, being supportive of the Black Lives Matter. See, here's some of the problems that I see in that is that even within the Asian community, there is some backlash to that. Because, you know, they see some of the, the results of the protests and some of the violence and, and, you know, that doesn't sit well. There is definitely a seething rage. As I look at some of the media sites that are dedicated to Asian issues. I don't know how to bring that together to make it more cohesive. So, you know, I wish I had a better answer for you there, but that's kind of where it sits right now.
Supporting organizations that are doing the work and keeping these conversations going. Thank you very much for sharing, Robert. Great to hear from you. We're gonna go to Seifus Smith. Seifus, would you mind just sharing a little bit about what this has meant to you and, and some ways that we can come together to support?
I mean. Sure. When I viewed the footage, I couldn't make it through the whole video myself. I don't know, what comes to, what came to mind and what comes to mind, what rings over and over is granny and Papa were right. And your home training wasn't for nothing. And everything that you've been taught, you know, there's a reason you do the things that you've been taught to do. And have been put into practice so that you don't. Put yourself, as my father would say, stay out of harm's way, so you don't put yourself in harm's way. Whether or not you, whether or not it's harm for others. People have a lighter complexion. You have to be mindful of your surroundings and pay attention to where you are and what you're doing. You know, if you're in the grocery store, don't put your hands in your pockets, you know. But when I see the, the footage of what happened to. George Floyd, Ahmad Aubrey, everybody, does it, all of the countless names. Over and over and over, it's business as usual. People will talk about that. The vacant look that the officer had or whatever the look the officer had, the look of business as usual. This is normal practice. This is not something special or new. Now, for some of you, I realize it is special and new, but I've seen this before. I've been, I've been affected by this before personally. I grew up in Livermore, California, which we would say is a white city. My family was one of the first families here of color, let alone black, I mean of color. And I've been taught from a very young age what to say, what not to say, and never from a place of hate. My family, you know, explained to us at a very young age, people are going to treat you differently because of the way you look. But I was always raised and taught to treat people how I want to be treated. My mother, if you've ever met my biological mother, my mother is very fair skinned. She is, for all intents and purposes, she looks white by her skin tone. But she's not. My, my mom's side, we have Irish and other ancestry way back. So my mom came out very, just happened to come out very light. I do not bear that same resemblance. I have more of my father's pigmentation, which is fine. I love being black. But when I, when I see what's going on, I'm not shocked. This is not, this is not a, oh, wake up call moment. No, this is, this is what's been going on. I've been taught about this for the last few decades of my life. It's, it's not new.
When we talked before, you had mentioned a specific incident that happened to you here in Livermore when you were young. Do you feel comfortable sharing that?
Yeah, that's fine. As I was saying earlier, you know, I, my parents taught me to treat people how you want to be treated. A person in the news, Tamika Maori, was speaking at a press conference and she said, we learned the looting from you. We learned the rioting from you. And what she was referring to was, was us being brought over the way we were in ships. And being stolen from our country and having everything taken from us. That we had learned these practices from you, you being the broad brush of people who are white. And saying that we did not start this fight. So when you see Target and whatnot burning down, we learned from you. And what Aaron's talking about for me is, my parents didn't teach hate. They didn't teach. Violence and all of those things. What they taught us was to stand up for ourselves. And the first time I was introduced to hate was in the fourth grade. I was outside playing in our courtyard. Or in our court on our street with some friends of mine across the street and down the street and from behind my house and whatever. But we were outside playing one day. And for whatever reason. This family across the street, their young daughter got upset. I don't know what the, I can't now remember what at, but it doesn't matter. She got upset. And. She started to yell and she said, go back to Africa, you nigger. I thought to myself, I said, I ain't never been to Africa. So I was perplexed. I knew, I knew the term. But I didn't understand where the hatred was coming from. So I went back inside and I told my, you know, my grandparents, my mother what had happened. And they sat me down and explained to me, you know, what she meant by that. And then they went over to her family's house. And there was a conversation had and her parents, obviously very apologetic and whatnot. But she learned it from somewhere. You know, no, no child in the fourth grade, white, black, green, yellow. Knows to tell somebody else of color to go back to Africa, let alone the term nigger. Where does that come from? Right? She had never, she'd never heard me say it. She never heard anyone in my family say it. You know, so it's, it was taught to her by someone. And at that age, I can only imagine it's taught to you by someone in your household. Now, maybe she learned it from one of her family's friends or some other friends. But the point being, this is not me going out and spewing hate. This is hate coming my way. And for nothing, having done nothing to warrant that kind of, you know. And for nothing, having done nothing to to warrant that kind of, you know, that kind of reaction. I'd, I'd been in her house. I'd, I knew her mother and father. Me and her brother were good friends. And I'd played in their backyard with them for years. And then for there to be a, a type of, you know, interactions where she would feel uh, and again, being a child in the fourth grade, feel that it's okay to to say this to someone, another human being. That was just, it blew me away because I had never heard it, you know, from someone like, in in a space like that, so.
This isn't from far away. This is, this is local.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and and uh, as we talk through this, we, you know, have have talked through some ways that maybe um, we can begin to work through and not that um, this is a new issue, right? I think this is what we're hearing from all of our panelists, um, from the intersectionality of our Asian brothers and sisters, our Latinx brothers and sisters, um, our black brothers and sisters, that there, this has been going on, right? And now um, that we're having an opportunity where we're coming together, what are um, what are some things that that maybe you believe would be helpful for us to move together to support you as your, your church brothers and sisters?
Educate yourself on what the problem is. I think from what I see, a lot of the times is it's people don't even understand what the problem is. No different in when we look at the specific case right now of Mr. Floyd, we go, oh, well, they said he was a drug addict, or oh, he was using counterfeit money or this, that and the other. The reality is they killed somebody and took his life. And he didn't do something that that would warrant a death sentence, even by the law standards, or so you tell me, or so I read. Um, so educate yourself on on what the, the problem is. Because when I look and see the disproportionate statistics that show, you know, if it was just because he was a drug addict or if it was just because he was using counterfeit money, unfortunately, in my life, I know plenty of people of light skin who've done the exact same thing. They're all walking around just fine, ain't been to jail. You know, so educate yourself on what the problem is and don't be ignorant when someone tells you, hey, this is, this is what's going on and this is how it's affecting me. You know, if you're going to, you're going to call yourself a brother or sister, my brother and sisters would go and say, hey, this is not right, after educating themselves and be able to say, we need to change this. And so if you're going to to try and come alongside me, you're not gonna be able to understand what it's like to be a black man if you're not a black man. I don't expect you to do that. What I do expect you to do is to go out and seek change in areas that you can affect change. Because I can't, even if all of us people of color got together, and let me not say all of us people of color, if all of us black people got together to go and and vote and change these laws, we don't have enough numbers. Now you add in the Asian culture, the Hispanic culture, the, all the other cul- cultures of color, then maybe. But more than that, the people who are, are making the laws do not look like me. So until they and you decide that you want to see change, you know, that's where we're seeing now, which is great in this movement of of seeing all of these people who are, who don't look like, who are not the same complexion out in the streets, who are trying to affect change. That's, that's the great part that we're seeing right now. Because in the past, it's just been the minorities trying to affect change. And the problem with that is it's, it's gonna take more than that. There's a reason the word minority is a word. If you are educated in that, you'll know that that means we don't have enough numbers to do it ourselves. So everyone has to get on board. Everyone has to choose a side of what's right to make that, you know, to make it an equal place for all of us, as human beings on this planet.
And that's powerful. Cephas, thank you for being so open and sharing such a powerful story. Um, John, uh, John Linters, would you uh, mind sharing with us a little bit what this time has meant to you and and how we can support?
Oh, yeah, um, first and foremost, I just want to thank uh, the opportunity just to be able to kind of share my story first and foremost with the church. Uh, I guess to answer your first question about um, what does George Floyd's death mean to me? When I saw the video, all ten minutes, eight minutes and forty-six seconds of a Caucasian male putting his knee on the back of someone's throat and having a grown man call for help, beg for his life, and towards the end of his life, he called for his mom. The only person that I've ever witnessed beg or called for their parents was my mother when she was on her deathbed. My heart goes out to Mr. Floyd and the family. I think about the flood of emotions that went through my mind uh, when watching it, which was definitely one of which was anger, disappointment. Uh, to say a few, um, I think about the three thousand plus African Americans who were lynched along with tw- twelve hundred plus white people who were lynched along with them because they helped them. Between the years of eighteen eighty-two to nineteen sixty-eight, and the numbers keep on climbing. Uh, I think about all the political BS and about the systematic oppression and how this nation was built upon African Americans' backs. The land was looted and stolen land from Native Americans. And I believe that, and our US history books at this point in time are completely biased because like history tells us, he who wins wars writes the history books. And I think that's a major, major issue at this point in time. I think about how the African American culture, black culture, has been painted with us being labeled as criminals, thugs, monsters, predators. But yet, if I was white and I stood up for what I believe in, I'm labeled as a hero. I think about all the traumatizing experiences that which that I've experienced throughout my lifetime just because of the color of my skin. I remember being in middle school um, and being followed around the store uh, just because I was black and I didn't even realize it. Because I had all my white friends with me and they were following me, uh, they were doing their own thing as well. I remember being sixteen years old, straight out of high school in Alameda, waiting for a bus so that I could go ahead and start training for my football stuff. And I noticed a cop in a white car. He rolls by me in an unmarked car and he gives me this mean mug. And I'm like, I thought, I thought nothing of this. Two minutes rolls by and I had five to six cop cars pulled out on me, surrounded me. Ten cops, easy, has all their guns drawn on me at gunpoint. And I'm baffled because honestly, my parents have taught me literally like, like Cephas said too, is that they teach us that, make sure that we don't do anything to put us in harm's way. Stay calm, yeah, say yes, sir, yes, ma'am. Be as non-threatening as possible. That was probably one of the most traumatizing things I've actually ever experienced when it comes to police in general. The police officer comes up to me, asks me for an ID. Being at sixteen years old, I don't have any ID. I have maybe a school ID, but he didn't believe that I was in high school. I asked him what was going on. He said that you fit the description. And I'm like, what do you mean I fit the description? He goes, there's a black African American male that has been robbing people on the bus and you fit the description. This cop almost didn't even take my word and I was gonna be carted off to jail. Luckily, he believed me and then that was that. I told my coach about it. I never told anyone uh, to like, I never told the local police department this whatsoever because I knew that nothing was going to be done anyways. Because society has taught African American males or African American people that even if we tell someone, doesn't mean that they're gonna actually believe what we say. I think about the pressure of which I feel every single day to try to perform twice as better than my white counterparts because I know that things are not gonna be given to me easily. I know that I want to be judged a lot harshly and everything that I do is a lot more magnified. I think about all the back ended comments I get, such as, oh, uh, your name sounds, no, what, when someone sees your resume on a stack of work papers, they're gonna think that you're white. Or you talk very proper. You sound very white. Or um, you hold yourself well. Like these, these comments sometimes almost have this condemnation of which that says, don't be proud to be black, but be everything that you can to be white in order for you to be accepted into a society of which that truly won't even accept us anyway. I think about, I think about my people right now protesting right now for our rights, our civil rights that we've been literally crying out since nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties. And it's happened every single decade. We've had multiple conversations and just like this, and we beat it like a dead horse. I'm hoping that at this point in time that it's hitting a tipping point of which that change is actually going to happen. I don't want my people, I don't want African American people, people of color, people who are standing with us to be labeled as thugs, miffits, monsters, because they're standing up for what they believe in. But yet, when we look at history once again, our forefathers created this country based off of a right. We learnt these habits from the founding fathers. I think it's time, it's about time for us to really realize exactly what we're actually uprising for. For goodness sakes, they built a country because of taxation without representation. And here we are, fighting for, literally just wanting to be created equal. We just want to matter. To have a cop stand on your neck for four, eight minutes and forty-six seconds, like it was this casual business? That's a shame. I think seeing that video rewinding back in my head, it solidified exactly how much I hate the system, but I don't hate all cops. And I believe that things do need to change.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much for being so open and transparent. Man, I, I almost feel a, a little insensitive with us having to move on time wise. Um, I, I just want to say thank you to each one of you for, for sharing from all of your own personal thoughts and feelings. It sounds to me like um, we've got a lot of work to do. I do want to express love to each and every one of you guys. Thank you so much for sharing your stories. I know um, Chris has some of the questions that some of our church members have, have put together that they're asking. Uh, but just wanted to pause real quick and just thank each one of you guys for being able to take the time to come here and and share from your own personal experience. Thank you all so much. Chris?
Yeah, be- before I, I read these questions, I, I just, I gotta echo what Aaron just said and and uh, man, John, Cephas, especially with, with the stories you guys each just told. Uh, on behalf of your church family, I'm, I'm heartbroken to hear that those experiences happened to you. I, I, I think we, as people listening, are heartbroken to hear it. Sorry that that has happened and 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 as Aaron said, grateful that you would be vulnerable enough to share those so that we can listen and understand, uh, try to understand. And um, and I, I promise you, and I, I had, I, I think I shared this in the email I sent out about this, is at church, our response can't be and won't be to just listen. We've got to do more than that. And so um, uh, when this is over, this hour and a half that is going on too, uh, I, I just would say, we, there'll be continued conversation. There already has been about what this looks like moving forward, so. Um, let me, let me read you some questions we got from some of our, our church here. And uh, I think this was coming in to some of the comments and and thoughts out of what it is to be allies. This is for anybody, all of you. When has an ally ever helped you? Like, can you think of a time where, where, when an ally, somebody came alongside and and was able to be the ally you need us to be? And uh, uh, if not, when is it time you could have used one?
Mastica?
Yeah.
Awesome. So um, I'll give you an example. I went on a road trip with my wife and her family uh, fairly recently in May, I believe. And we were in a super mega Walmart over in the middle of Utah. We're checking out a bunch of items. And we're in the self-checkout and I purchase everything. And um, I hand it over to the front person. As they usually do, they check up all the, the stuff. And the front person decided that there's a bunch, there's a few items on this particular receipt that were not there, even though that I paid for every single one. And he started to basically accuse me of being a thief. And it got to the point of which that I had to kind of back off and allow my wife to really like step in, which she's Dutch, hundred percent, white as snow. And I gave her the receipt and I had to walk away. Right when that happened, the guy literally looked at the receipt once or twice. They double confirmed that everything that was actually on that receipt was inside the cart and we were able to walk away. That particular ally being able to kind of call out bull crap when you see it and being there for your uh, like, your African American brothers, sisters, wherever, is what we need from time to time. And like, really like being an, an active anti-racist. And uh, it was really cool to like, see that actually all happened in front of me, but I did, personally, I was so mad that I couldn't even see straight, so. That was nice.
Yeah, so if I'm hearing correctly, John, I'm hearing you say, when, when, when things like that are happening right in front of you, uh, what an ally could do is say something in those moments. Yenira, how about, how about you? Any thoughts as to, to what it would look like for, for uh, allies in our church to come alongside people in the Hispanic community?
Yeah, so I taught elementary school in a huge Latino or Hispanic population over the hill. Um, very underserved and it was so, we had a student who needed special ed. But just services, it was constantly being denied and constantly be denied. And so my girlfriend, she is an ally before the word became popular. Um, she is a white woman activist and she pushed and fought and fought and headed, headed against the district and just everyone to make sure that this young first grader who was also, you know, parents from immigrant parents who didn't know how to navigate our school system or the language skill set would get the social and services that he needed. And she's still, I mean, she is still frontline, everything. So she lives the walk that she talks, or I don't know if I said that correctly, but that's someone who's an ally in my book.
That's great. How about you, Robert? Any thoughts as to what an ally looks like to the Asian community? Or, or, or you in your life? Can you think of a time where you've needed that?
Yeah, you know, not so much uh, needing it for myself, but it, it, I was thinking about a, a time when uh, when I was in high school and uh, I, I was a lot more of an, somewhat of an activist there. But uh, you know, we had issues with uh, the ESL, where English as a second language program. Especially for then uh, some of the Korean students there. And and there was some, you know, dissatisfaction with the way the program was put together and whatnot. And then, you know, as, as we kind of dug into that and and sought to, you know, uh, see who we could bring that up to, uh, I actually encountered um, a gentleman, Hispanic gentleman uh, that uh, was pretty active uh, in, in city politics. Because this was the city of Gardena down in Southern California. Uh, which, you know, by the way, if you look up the history, it's a huge Asian, Japanese, American community. But uh, even, even back then, um, but it wa- it was just interesting because we, you know, I, I had one student who was of Korean background. And and again, back then in the seventies, you know, you, you did not see a lot of uh, Korean uh, uh, people, uh, background there. And then to work with this other Hispanic gentleman who was willing to help us, uh, myself and my Korean friend, find a way to address the, the ESL program and, you know, who, where we could escalate that to. And you know, keep in mind, you know, this is the early seventies. You know, no social media, no, no email, uh, you know, everything has to be submitted in writing and whatnot. And, you know, we were a- actually a- able to get up to the lo- the local school board and get uh, an audience with uh, you know, an individual there that, that was willing to listen. able to get up to the lo- the local school board and get uh an audience with uh, you know, an individual there that, that was willing to listen to the issues there. So, you know, it goes back a long ways, I know. But, you know, as I think about that, that particular time in my life, uh, I don't think, uh, either the three of us thought of ourselves as, well, you know, I'm the Korean guy, I'm the Japanese guy, and I'm the Hispanic guy that's helping out these Asian guys. Uh, you know, we just, we just sat down and, and we sought to have a common goal. And as we talk, you know, as, as we look at the term ally, you know, we, we have to keep in mind, what, what, what does that mean? It's not just support or intervention, but it's working towards that common goal. And, you know, that common goal in, in what we've been talking about here today is equality. But, but also besides that, you know, we talk about equality in, in terms of, you know, what, what, what do the laws look like, et cetera? It, it, it's so much deeper than that. It is, it has to come from, you know, there's the psyche of our society. Each individual, you know, you, I, everyone has to admit that we have prejudice, uh, maybe not overtly, maybe not in the way against other ethnicities. But we, we all have some, some predispositions. We all have hatred that we felt, uh rightly or wrongly. And, and I think, you know, we have to come to terms with that. Uh, and, and I think that's the beginning of, you know, becoming an ally with someone. First, understanding what it is that we have within ourselves. And then finding, you know, when we do come beside someone, working towards that common goal, whatever, whatever that may be. But, you know, certainly to me, it's more than just uh, you know, changing the laws. I think it goes much deeper than that.
Let me ask this question. This is one that, that somebody submitted here. Uh, and I'd love to ask Michael and Cephas this, if, if possible. How is it, uh, somebody asked, how can we make opportunities available for people of color? And they wrote, this is the issue of privilege, how whites have a long-established role over people of color. Is this a bias to keep the status quo? Uh, do you understand the question there? Uh, what, what does it look like? Or, or what can we be doing to make more opportunities available?
Yeah, Cephas, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll take a first stab at, at that one. And um, thank you for the question. Um, and, and Chris, I'm, I'm gonna try to keep my answer short, because this, we could do another, another hour or so on, on this one. Let me start with the kind of the end of that question. Uh, status quo. This has been the way it has been for hundreds of years, by design, by design. So, we're talking about how might we um, create more opportunities? First of all, I, I, I think, for me, it's important to understand the opportunity that we're talking about is, or any, the equality that we're talking about, is the equality of opportunity. So, do we all have the same opportunities to succeed? Today, the answer is no. And that's a hard answer, I think, for white America to hear. Today, the answer is no. And you can look at many um, metrics that show that. So how do we start to get to a place where we have equal opportunity before we can even talk about having equal outcomes for things? And so, for me, it is important that you take a look at uh local leadership, where you live. Is it reflecting um, a bias toward equal opportunity? Or, or does it not? And if it doesn't, how do you get involved um and, and change that? Because this is part of how we can start to influence the system in a different way. It might also mean in terms of, and I'm glad that Cephas brought this up, in terms of educating yourself. You might need to join with a group or, or a body that's larger than you, that is working in this area. Uh, and it could have more of a, um, more of an opportunity to leverage because of economies of scale for us, for us to be able to do this. So for me, it, it is, how do we create or start to create equality and opportunity and what that looks like?
How about you, Cephas? Any thoughts on this one?
Yeah, I'm uh, piggyback off of what Michael said, in a sense. You said two things that's uh, stood out for me in earmark. Equal, the word equal and, and, and the word design. And the reality is, first and foremost, if you want to see um, equality, you first have to treat me as your equal. That's the first thing. And in order to do that, going back to what I said, that goes into the education part. So here you have design, the other part of that. It was designed this way. There are those of you who are in places of power where you have the ability to affect change, where you can change the design. Whether you're a small business owner, a large business owner, uh, you're in upper management in corporate America on the law side of things. Through all the different economic and social powers, if you are in a place of power in those locations, you have to decide that I am your equal. And what that looks like is changing the design to where that I have this, though I have the title of equality, I get viewed in equal manner. That just because my name is Cephas, and it might sound threatening versus Kelly's name that comes across your desk when you're interviewing for a position, that you don't overlook my application just because the name might be difficult to pronounce. You know, there, there's all these different things that go into it, but it, it looks that, it looks like you having to take a look at yourself and where you are and what can you do? Because I don't expect every person of non-color to be go out there, be able to go out there and be an activist overnight. You have to be able to look at your surroundings and see where you are and figure out, what can I do? What is within my power? Of how I can treat people both on a personal side and, and a systematic side of business and, and, and opportunity to affect change.
You know, when you said something just now, you, you, you said uh more than just the title of equality, but, but actually being treated with equality. I watched Michael and Yenira just nod their head vigorously. I'd love to know more about what you guys were, were thinking when Cephas said that.
Well, um, just a, yeah, a couple, Cephas, thank you for that, that comment, by the way. The thought that, that came to mind um is, part of the reason I think this is hard is because it might be seen as anti-American dream. American dream is you work hard, and you pull yourself up by your bootstraps. And, and then if, if you do that, you'll be successful. That works for white America. It doesn't work for people of color America. And so, for me to be equal, you actually have to treat me differently. And that goes against American dream as well. Because then you should go, whoa, 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 preferential treatment? Why, why should you get that and not anybody else? But the fact of the matter is,
I'm gonna interrupt you, Mike. I'm gonna interrupt you right there, because what you just said is the point, and a lot of people I think can't understand it.
Go for it, go for it.
You want me to pull myself up by my bootstraps? I have to have bootstraps first. You took those away in the beginning, and you haven't given them back since. So how are you going to equally look at me to do the same task that you've been tasked to do, and I don't have the tools and means to do, do so?
Yep. You know, you know how I say, Cephas, I'll tell you how I say, and, and I've gotten into this conversation with, with friends of mine. When they say, a rising tide lifts all boats. And I said, you know, that analogy works if you have a boat. If you don't have a boat, if you don't have a boat, or why, right, a rising tide just drowns you. And that's, and that, and that's what you need. That's what you need to realize. So I, I think, Chris, those are a couple of things that once you've said that, that, that came to mind about why, if, if, if it can be difficult, uh, this is a difficult message to hear.
John, it looked like you had something you were gonna add just now.
Oh, absolutely. So I, I want to piggyback off of what they're saying as well, but I think it is extremely important that if we're gonna create equal opportunities for future generations, I think we have to really start looking at our educational system. I think as generationally for us, as adults, like, our times are already coming and gone. We've already had solidified beliefs and views and how we view people. But I think for our children and our future children, I think that there was uh, there was a doctor by the name of Jane Elliott. She said that you could eliminate racism within one decade. And I think the reason why I bring this up is that due to the fact that if we're able to educate our kids, uh, our children to be able to um, have the same exact type of opportunities as if, or as for, say, the kids that are out here in Livermore or um, San Ramon area. Like, if we're gonna really create opportunities, I think we have to start from the foundation. So maybe if, if just dreaming big here, maybe there's organizations out there that actually sponsor low-income schools that actually provide books, not Chromebooks, so on and so forth. So that way, they could actually get the same amount of education and outreach that they are able to be provided from out over in this particular area. And I think that's probably one way that which we, we could start on a micro scale to begin to create opportunities for future references. Um, I think the only way that we're able to actually enforce any type of change is if we do it on a small scale first, and then we get people's attention, and then it'll go up from there.
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing all of you say is that we've got to stop looking at uh opportunities as somehow stealing from people who might have already had opportunities. And it seems like some people are worried that that might be the case. Here's, here's another question that's come in, and, and I'm just keeping my eye on the clock. We've got about five more minutes. Maybe it can be a, 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 a quick one, even though this is an age-old question, so terrible for me to even word it that way. But, but uh, what can we do to end stereotypes, homophobia, and racism? You think you can solve that in about thirty seconds, any one of you?
Don't be that. Don't be like you want to be treated.
It has to start with the individual. Yeah.
You got spoken over there a little bit. What was?
Yeah, just real quick. No, I, I absolutely agree. It, don't be like that. You know, you have to recognize where your biases are, and you have to be willing to admit it, and that's where change starts.
Every person, every individual looking in their own, at their own self. Yeah, that's good. Did you have something you were gonna say there?
Yeah, so I actually, oh, my fault. Go for it.
Go, John.
Yeah, so I, I actually heard a quote, I think it was D.L. Hughley that said it during like a CNN interview. He basically said that uh, black people uh, black people live in the most dangerous place in the world. It's in the imaginations of people who have implicit bias of them. So, and that, and that being said, like honestly, like for black people, for people of color, I think it's very important that we feel that we don't have to walk on eggshells and try to tiptoe around exactly how you guys presumably feel about us. So therefore, we don't have to act differently around you.
That's good. Yenira?
Yeah, I think the thing is that you're, what I'm hearing, the trend is that we all, we've learned how to speak differently when we are in different environments. And the different environments are, and I'm gonna speak, you know, corporate America. That's the environment I know. So, we monitor so much more what we do. And then the fact that we have this conversation about race in our communities all the time, it's not new, new topics for us, because it's our reality. So, you know, how, how, get to know the individual on a real level, not just get to know the individual on the real level, not at the work, not anything, you know, at the home, I guess is what I'm trying to get to.
Relationships. I think it's true that when you, when you build actual relationships with people, it's hard to see stereotypes. You, you get past that very, very quickly. Michael?
Let me just add one more, and this is, this will be my holy grail for this, is the realization that if you are a majority, racism hurts you just as much as it hurts the minority. And when you understand that, because of our connectedness, racism hurts you just as much in the, in the majority as it does for us in the minority, at that point, maybe we have a, a, a starting ground to have the right types of conversations and behaviors.
That's good, man.
If I could throw in one piece real quick on that, Chris, if I could.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I got one question I want to end on though, so make sure you give me some time to do it.
I will, I will. Um, I just want to say for me personally, as, you know, mentioned here, that we need to um, we need to question our own biases. And I'll tell you, I, I used to believe that I had none, to be honest. But the closer that I got to listening and not talking, um, I've realized that I, I have them. And I, I've had to denounce them, and it's hard. And I'll tell you, it's difficult to um, question the way that I thought, the way that I believed, the way that I've lived my life, and, and really the undeserved advantage that I have. And, and I'll tell you, I'm not there, I'm not where I need to be, but I, I'm learning to make gains that way by pausing and asking myself, is this something that's actually true, or is this something that I'm, I'm assuming? And, and I'll just say, like, it, from the, the white community, we are going to need to question those moments. I think a lot of issues that we've heard are from people of color's perspectives today. And I think a lot of the problem and the undeserved favor really lies on, on our side, as the majority that we need to question those things and, and really peel them apart, dismantle them is the word.
Aaron, I'm glad you took the time to say that, man. That was good. Let's, let's close with this. Let me ask you guys this question. What do you need from your church? I'd love to just, i- i- in a, in a statement, um, i- i- a statement from each of you. You mind just telling us, what do you need from Crosswinds?
I'll start, uh, space to have these conversations.
Okay. Robert, you're unmuted.
I would concur. Uh, we need, we need to keep this going. Uh, you know, the, the, what we've talked about here today is the tip of the iceberg. All of these issues, uh, for all of us are much more complex than that. And uh, yeah, space to, to do it, absolutely.
That's good. John, Cephas, Michael?
Well, I have one I'm not quite sure, what, what it, what it, what it looks like yet. Uh, but, but, but I would say, stand in solidarity with me.
I need you to be on my side. Good, good.
Yeah, no, 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 you go.
Nope, go ahead, go ahead.
No, you go.
After you.
We'll flip a coin.
Here, Cephas, you go first. You, you were halfway through your sentence.
Uh, I, I need you to stand on my side of the fence, even if it's uncomfortable for you.
It's a big one.
I guess for me, it's just, I think for me, it's just uh, just be a friend, uh, and allow me just to be able to ben- and believe me when I say something. And then, yeah, and I'll do the same for you. I think it's just a common courtesy and common respect.
Thank you, guys. Thank, thanks to all of you for sharing. And uh, again, being as vulnerable with us as you have been. And um, man, I, I hope that uh, I, I know for me, I hope for, for the rest of our church listening and watching, that uh, that they are honored that you would share that stuff. It's almost like this, this is like your hearts you're giving us in this. And uh, I just hope that we're holding them close and, and tenderly and, and protecting them in this. So um, I, I, I'm so grateful for it. And uh, I agree, the conversation needs to continue. And, and, and I agree, it's gotta be more than conversation. So um, I'm looking forward to that being more than conversation here at Crosswinds.
Michael, did you have one last thought for us, Michael?
Yeah, the last, this is, and this is part of my prayer in this time.
Actually, Michael, I was gonna ask you to close us in prayer.
Okay.
Yeah, I was. So you, you can make it your actual prayer.
Why, why, why don't I do that then? Your God, I, I, I just want to, first of all, Lord, thank you. Thank you for having a church where we can have this conversation. Thank you for um, these wonderful people of God that, that, that you created in this moment to speak from their hearts and their experiences. Thank you for the church family that has been with us over uh this past hour and a half of, of this town hall. I pray for their hearts. I pray for our hearts. I pray for the heart of the church and the heart of this country. Lord, my, my one additional prayer in this moment is I hope that this is the one. I hope that there is never another George Floyd. I hope this is the one. This is the one where the people of Christ stand up and um, make this place in alignment. with the two commandments that Jesus gave us, to love you with all our heart, mind, soul and strength and to love our, love each other as ourselves, love our neighbors as ourselves. Truly, I, I, I hope that, that we can do that, uh, in this moment. Lord, again, I, I thank you for this time. I, I thank you for this space. Thank you for showing up, um, for us tonight. I know I felt you in the house and I'm sure other people felt you in the house. And you never let us down, Lord, and you were always there with us. So with that, um, I want to pray blessings on everyone here, everyone listening and for, um, your healing power in our nation, um, in Jesus's name.
Amen. Thanks, Michael. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate you being a part of this and, uh, love you all. And, um, cannot wait to see you all in person again.
Yep. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Goodbye, guys.